I'd like to call October 8th work session of the Suffolk City School Board to order. Turn it over to Dr. Whitney, please.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. As you may recall, a while back, you had asked, the board had asked that we talk about or present, what do we do to get our students ready for either college or career choices? This afternoon, we have asked a number of people to join us and share how we provide academic and career counseling and planning for our students. I'm going to call to the podium Mrs. Jacqueline Chavis, our Deputy Superintendent.
Good afternoon. The team that will be presenting to you this afternoon will be made up of our school counselors from each of the levels, elementary, middle, and high school, along with our Director of Career and Technical, Coordinator of Career and Technical Education, and then Mr. Andre Skinner, who is now the new Director of the Prudence Center. And what they will do is walk you through the steps that we take as it relates to career planning from elementary school through high school, actually through the senior year. And then each year, the plan that's developed is revisited. And so, the team will share that with you, as well as the steps that are taken in scheduling students appropriately for the careers of interest. Okay? Ready?
On the first page in your booklet?
Yes. As they come up, so that I don't make a mistake or blunder, okay?
Good afternoon. I am Karen Jones, and I'm the School Counselor at Kilby Shores Elementary. And I was going to share with you today how career education starts at the elementary level, and how we actually begin developing with each child an academic and career plan. We focus at the elementary level, pre-k through 5, on career exploration and exposing our students to the world of work. We schedule career days each year for our students to expose them to the various careers, to have a hands-on experience, to have the community members come in and share what they do, what education and training that is required, and so forth, and they can ask them real-life questions. In addition to that, in 5th grade, we dive a little bit deeper, and we use a website that we call Virginia Career View. And this is a free website that we encourage our students to use and explore. And in doing that, we help them match their interests to what careers are out there, so they can become aware of the many, many careers, and how that matches up with what they like to do and what they're good at. And then when they do that, we assist them in further exploring. In this website, as you see on the screen, there are lots of interactive games and things that they can even do and access at home. We encourage them to share those with their families, and they can actually do those throughout the year to increase their knowledge of what careers are available in the world of work. And as I mentioned before, this is a free website, which is always good. Parents are excited about that. The students get really excited. There's no requirement of setting up an account and having a username. They simply click on and go, and they gather lots of, lots of information. Now, once students have, in 5th grade, have worked with me on exploring their interests and matching those with various careers, we begin working on their academic and career That's another example of part of the website, when we help kids to be able to explore. This is the actual academic and career plan that we begin with our 5th graders. We sit down with them one-on-one, and we explain to them what's required in middle school, as far as the core content areas, explain to them the option that they have in 6th grade, and I'll get into that in just a minute. But we talk about what careers we've matched up, how that it's going to, their interests are going to change as they develop and they grow. This is a working document that our counselors revisit every year with students to help update changes. Now, if you look under grade 6, and in my 5th grade, we only focus on grade 6. The middle school transition is already overwhelming enough, so we don't want to overwhelm them with having to make decisions for 7th and 8th grade. So, 6th grade is what we focus on, and the core content classes for English, history, science, math, and health and PE are requirements. So, they have that already done for them. They do have a big decision to make. They can opt for four exploratory classes that will change for each of the nine weeks, and in your handouts there, it is the front and back of the Goldenrod copy. They can, the computer assigns those, they have four different exploratories per year. Or, if they're interested in singing, they can track chorus for one nine week, not nine weeks, and then three other exploratory classes are chosen for them. Or, if they really love music or interested in band or strings, that is a year-long commitment. So, that is their big decision to make when they go into 6th grade. Now, if you look over to the far right, we do indicate the interest inventory date, and that is the date that we work with them to match those interests to the careers in the world of work. And we actually help them with career clusters. And in your pink handout are 16 career clusters that are defined, that we use as a guideline. And of course, being in 5th grade and the developmental age, that can be very overwhelming. So, what we assist them in doing is, once they have taken their interest inventory, they have, for example, "Oh, I think I'm interested in nursing, I like helping people, and I like science and math." We help them to understand how that fits under the health sciences. So, there are a ton of career options out there, and they do fit under those clusters. And students will learn more about those as they proceed through middle and high school with the various inventories that they do. Then, if you look down to the post-secondary plans, we help our students have, we have a discussion, "What are you interested in after you finish high school?" We get them thinking about that. A lot of them really know already, "I want to go to a four-year college," or "I want to go in the military," or "I want technical school training." We get them to think about that and talk about it, and see how it matches up with what interests they have. And then they further that on in middle school. Once we've done all this and have our one-on-one meetings, I send home a detailed explanation letter to parents to let them know about all the information we've discussed, let them know how this academic and career plan plays out for 6th grade. I have them review it, and call me if they have any questions, and then sign and return it. And then, it picks up in middle school, where the middle school counselors further their exploration. Any questions? Okay. Now, we're having our Career Day at Kilby Shores on the 6th of November, so if you would like to come on out, please join us. We're going to start about 9:30. We'd love to have you. Thank you.
I'm Sarah Catlett. I'm Guidance Counselor and Guidance Director at Kings Fork Middle School. With our middle school planning, we pick up where the elementary school leaves off. We work with a new free program offered by the Virginia Community College System called Virginia Wizard. And with the Virginia Wizard, we complete in 6th grade a skills inventory, and in 7th grade a values inventory. Through the skills inventory, we explore soft and hard skills, asking students to rate their experience level with various activities. The soft skills are those workplace readiness skills, such as being respectful, responsible, and learning to be, to work on time. And the hard skills are those more job-specific skills, such as learning to fly, flying an airplane or operating a forklift. The values inventory that's completed in the 8th grade helps students consider the importance of the workplace environment while rating items on a scale of 1 to 5 for their preference. These are things such as working alone versus working on a team, or working in a quiet environment as opposed to working in a very active workplace. So, let me show you here. This is a picture of what, a split screen of what you would see when you sign into Virginia Wizard. The Wizard is a free service. Students are, by nature of being enrolled in Suffolk Public Schools, assigned a login and a password through Virginia Wizard, which will follow them all the way through graduation. Parents, though, and students may access this website without the use of a login. The purpose of the login is to be able to record and document things such as their ACT scores, SAT scores, career cluster interests, job interests, college applications that they can, that they may apply for through the Virginia Wizard program. So, it's a wealth of information right there at their fingertips. We have two planned activities that we use at middle school level. Career Day, we have one of those two that promotes parent involvement, as well as community involvement in our schools, looking at careers of interest. We normally have ours at Kings Fork Middle School in February. But then, the big thing coming up for Suffolk Public Schools is our Fourth Annual College and Career Readiness Fair, which will be November 7th. It'll be hosted by Kings Fork Middle School. We'll have our opening assembly, if you would, in the auditorium at 8, with workshops starting at 8:30 in the morning. The workshops will run four different sessions until about 12:15. Then there will be exhibits open in the gym, where students will be able to speak to college representatives and representatives from the workforce at their leisure until about 1:30, and their parents are invited to come, students as well. The 6th grade completes on the academic and career plan, which we refer to, I have to tell myself, academic career plan. Our students are taught to call it their ACP. So, everything has an acronym. So, on the ACP, the middle school ACP, we complete in 6th grade the 7th and 8th grade portions of the plan. We also talk about their zoned high school. We record their interest inventory date from elementary school, as well as their career cluster, which, once they complete the skills inventory, which is documented, sometimes their career cluster has changed, and so we allow that change to be put in there. And it can change many times throughout a 6th grader's term. We also begin talking about the special programs and that Suffolk Public Schools offers, as well as post-secondary plans. In 7th grade, there's an introduction to high school. With that introduction, we share with them the program of studies. We delve deeper into our special programs, such as the Governor's School of the Arts, the International Baccalaureate Program, or Project Lead the Way Engineering and Biomedical Sciences programs. Information nights are held at the middle school level for parents and students to come out and learn more from students participating, as well as teachers in those courses. Then, in the 8th grade, we introduce program of studies further, and we also begin developing the high school academic and career plan, which looks like this. And you can tell from just comparing the two, that the high school plan gets even more detailed about their interest. We also teach them to track their verified credits on the high school academic and career plan. In the 8th grade, in the 7th grade, the 8th grade plan is revisited, as well as the 9th grade here. And in the 9th grade, the student, excuse me, in the 8th grade, the students go on and complete a full high school academic and career plan. So, for more information about the high school plan, I introduce Ms. Williams.
My name is Sheila Williams. I am the Director of Counseling at Lakeland High School. And as Ms. Catlett stated, we do pick up, as the students matriculate to 9th grade, we pick up the academic and career plan. We revisit it with every student. We have a one-on-one presentation or meeting with the students. And we look at the ACP, as we all call it now, and we sit down with the student to make sure that things are the same, or if they're different. If they're different, we then talk to the student about what the differences are, and then we try to devise a plan for them that will carry them through college. In the 9th grade, we look at the diploma types that they're going to be pursuing, whether it be advanced or standard, and we try to follow that track to the letter. With their CTE courses, we look at their interests, what they're interested in, to see if we offer courses at the high school level that will help them. And we, you know, try to match those courses, of course, with their career plans, or with their career goals. We sit down with them every year. We revisit the plan, because as we all know, teenagers will change their minds like the wind. So, we have to make sure that we go back every year to make sure that they're still on that same track. And then we, at the end of the year, we encourage the parents to, we send the academic and career plans home, and we encourage the parents to review it, sit down with their students. And if they have any questions, they can either jot those questions down. We invite them to call us. We invite them to come in to meet with us, because we want the parents to have the buy-in as well. If we have the parents, as well as us, working on the same side, and the students, then we can have a very collaborative effort in making sure that that student is very successful. With our 9th and 10th grade students, as in middle school, we do use Virginia Wizard as well, giving them an interest inventory, because stated before, they will change their minds very often. So, and we realize that sometimes they don't take it as serious as they should take it. So, we try to give that to them in the 9th grade, as well as the 10th grade. Because in the 10th grade, they're starting to mature a little more and make those sound and foundational decisions, as far as what their career goals are going to be. So, we want to revisit that as often as we can, to be sure that we're providing the best service for them in their high school career, so that we can match those career choices with the courses that we have in the high school. We take those 10th grade students also with their interests over to the Prudence Center. All our 10th grade students, we go through the English 10 classes, to make sure that every 10th grade student has the opportunity to visit the Prudence Center. We go over there typically November, December-ish, to introduce them to all the services and programs that the Prudence Center offers. So, as they're making their choices in high school, they can look at the Prudence Center and see, hm, this might be a path that I might want to take, or it could help me in the career choice that I want to have in the future. Such as medical, with the RNs and the ENT and all those things. So, we try to take them over there in November and December, to give them that opportunity to look at more things that Prudence can do for them, as well as what we have to offer on the high school side. At Lakeland High School, we actually offer Cavalier Night, and that's something that we started last year, and we will continue to do again this year. We bring the middle school students over to Lakeland on one evening. We actually did it in May of this year, and it was a huge success. They come over, we have a program in the beginning, introducing them to the various clubs, organizations, sports that we have there. The coaches and the presidents of those organizations, the student presidents of those organizations, introduce themselves, let the students and the parents know who they are. And then we have a meet and greet in the cafeteria, where we, it's a big to-do. We have the cheerleaders with their pom-poms, and we have the band, you know, blowing their instruments, and we have the ROTC. We just have everything. We do like a big showcase, and we let them know, this is what we have to offer you as you come over to the high school. Please come and be involved in the high school community, because that is what's going to help you in your, in your career as you move along, because you're going to have to be a well-rounded student, just not academic. We want you to be a part of the high school community. So, we give them a sneak peek of what we have to offer over at the high school side. So, we try to, and we do have a career fair as well for those students. In late February, early March, we have a career fair, again, at Lakeland during the day, when the students can go through, and we invite different unions, we invite organizations from within Hampton Roads, not just Suffolk, within Hampton Roads. We invite the city of Suffolk. We invite different entities to Lakeland, so that the students can walk around and see exactly what it is that they would have to do, how this, how the education that they're gaining right now will help them get a job in that career, or in that industry or organization. And they really go through, and they really ask pertinent questions, because I get all the time from the different organizations, that your students are asking wonderful questions, your students are doing wonderful, your students are so well-behaved. So, we get a lot of great compliments on our students. And we do invite the community colleges as well, because they also have that, not just the academic side, but the career side as well. So, they do offer courses for them as well, and trades for those students as well. So, we try to incorporate those in that career fair as well. So, we try to incorporate a whole lot of things within the four years that the students have, and not just the academic and career plan. We try to take that plan and make it become, we materialize it. So, that's what we offer them in the high school side.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
May I ask, is the ACP online, or is it always done paper, pencil?
It is done paper, pencil, simply because it's triplicate. We've asked many times if we can get it online, but because we want to, we have to keep it, instead of wasting paper copying, we want to keep a copy in their file. We want to share that with the students, so that the student can take it home and keep it with the parent. So, we have it in triplicate. And then the hard copy in the back, it moves on as the student moves on, from elementary to middle to high, it moves on. And it stays in their file as well, but the hard copy is kept with the counselor, and they move it on up the line. So, yes. We would love to have it online. It would make our lives a lot easier, but, you know, we understand, you know, why it has to be triplicate. It is the paper, it's because, well, because we have to give a copy, because we, if not, we'd have to make copies. And that is, if we have 1,100 kids in our building, we'd be making copies for the parents to take home, for them to keep in the file, and for us to move on with the council. So, that's three copies that we'd have to make. So, we just have it in triplicate.
My question is, what is the reason it's not online as of yet?
Because we have to keep it in triplicate form, unless, I mean, that's what techno, well, that's why we don't have it online. They said it can't be online, because we have to keep it in triplicate, which means we would have to print out three pieces of paper for every student. Because we have to send it home for the parent to sign, we have to keep it in their computer file, and we have to pass one on to the counselor moving on, you know, from elementary to middle to high.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question to it at middle school. I think inadvertently, you inadvertently left out a program, I think, if I'm not mistaken.
Sorry?
The biological, medical program.
Biomedical sciences?
At Lakeland.
Did I miss that out? I said it? Okay. I'm sorry. I was speaking quickly. You're very far away. You're closer on TV. You're very far away.
I think, I think it could be the bullet on one of the slides. It talks about Project Lead the Way, IB, Prudence, and Governor's School. The Project Lead the Way, remember, also, the biomedical falls under Project Lead the Way also. Yeah, it does. It's the program at Lakeland, as well as the program at Nesman River, are both Project Lead the Way programs.
Well, there's still, wouldn't it be some missed, people probably would get it mixed up. What do you think, you put it in parentheses then, that?
We have, and on many of our printed materials, we'll say the biomedical program, an extension of Project Lead the Way. I know when we applied for it originally, we found, and we discovered that it falls under the Project Lead the Way. So, it really is a matter of letting them know, under Project Lead the Way falls pathways to engineering, as well as the biomedical.
I have a question with regard to parents and their, the parental involvement with regard to choosing the courses. I know I had a 6th grader in middle school, and the choices were already made when she brought home the form for me to sign. And of course, I made some different choices, but do we have, do we have options for parents, and do we find that that may be an issue? When they see the form, it's already done, it's like, why were the courses chosen?
We ask, we want the student to be making choices. But we, when we send it home, when it's in triplicate, and we keep the hard copy with us, and then we send two copies home. The child has already signed, the guidance counselor has already signed, and we ask the parent and the child to discuss the form together. We give them the opportunity to write any kind of notes to us they'd like to, in the front or the back, give us a phone call. I even email plans home to parents. So, we utilize that, the electronic version that way. If a parent has a question or a concern, be happy to change something for them. Many times, the parents will sign the form and send it back, and then they continue having those dinner table conversations, which we encourage them to do. And we'll call and say, you know, we've been thinking about this, and we really don't think we want to take band, or my child is more interested in art as opposed to family and consumer science, whatever the case may be. And we make the change to the academic career plan and date it and initial it, so that our principal knows.
I didn't have a problem making a change, but I was concerned about the fact that many of the, not many, but some of the courses that are required to get into some of our specialty courses, I wasn't sure that parents understood. I understood, because I was here and I read the information.
Sure.
But I felt that there were some parents who may not have understood, that if you want your child in this program, these courses are going to have to be taken in the middle school, in order for them to qualify for the programs. So, I just want us to make sure we're making that point clear to parents.
That's an interesting point, because I've had a parent share that with me as well. And what it really boils down to is making sure that we raise the level of awareness of the programs early in middle school. Not to suggest that a student has to lock into that program, but if indeed, this is the route of you wanting to get into the biomedical program, these are the courses that you probably should be taking now, as much math and science as possible, and higher math and science, if indeed possible. So, I do think that's part of our, one of our marketing strategies, as far as getting the word out, because, and I know we've had conversations about each of the three programs. Of course, IB is well-known, because we've had it longer, but the other two programs aren't as popular, or as well-known. So, we do have a task, as far as making sure we communicate that to the general public, as well as our students.
I'm Gail Best, and my role this afternoon is to move you from ACPs to ICs. So, we're going to shift now to ICs, meaning we're going to talk about industry credentialing. Industry credentialing is a part of the state's initiative to encourage more students to work toward a selected industry credential, or a state licensure while pursuing a high school diploma. It has always been the goal of this school division, to prepare students for life after high school graduation. It is important that we continue to offer students instructional programs that will successfully prepare them for transition from high school, whether it be into the workforce, full-time or part-time, or maybe post-secondary education, maybe an apprenticeship program, or internship, or the military. The industry certification or state licensure exams are based on business and industry standards. Through the work of the CTE Leadership Team at the Virginia Department of Education, assessments that are used by employers to test the skill set and the knowledge of their employees are reviewed and selected. Then, the business and industry tests are then, or the state licensure, they're then matched to CTE courses. Students who entered the 9th grade in the 2013-14 school year, and if they are pursuing a standard diploma, they will be the first graduating class required to earn a CTE, state-approved industry credential, or state licensure. These students are now our high school juniors. There are multiple benefits for students to graduate from high school with an industry credential. In addition to the benefits before you, this opportunity enhances student self-esteem, which is evident when you're in the school buildings, and you hear the students proudly talking about the number of credentials that they have earned. And it also increases job opportunities for students. Just this week, I had an opportunity to meet a young lady at Nesman River High School. She's a senior now, and she's also co-president of the DECA organization at the district level. And she shared with me that she has earned her industry credentialing, her industry credential, and customer service and sales. And because of that, she was able to get two jobs this summer that she's still working. One is as a cashier, and the other one is a shift manager, because of being able to show them that she has met business and industry standards, as they relate to customer service and sales. There are various opportunities for students to earn an industry credential or a state licensure. A few of them are listed on the screen for you. When you look at industry exams, you want to think about those being exams that are written by the business and the industry sector. When we look at occupational competency assessments, these are tests that are job-ready assessments, and of course, state licensures that are offered to our Prudence Center students. So, with that, Mr. Skinner will come forward and continue to talk about the industry credentialing opportunities at the Prudence Center. We have about, we offer at least maybe 16 to 20 industry certification exams in our three high schools, with about six of those being connected directly to the Project Lead the Way program. Mr. Skinner?
Andre Skinner, Director of the Prudence Center. I almost want to say, "Welcome to the Prudence Center," following Ms. Best. I'll jump right in. Overview for the Prudence Center, we're a business and industry environment that offers or houses 16 instructional programs, that has the capacity of 355 slots allotted for Suffolk Public Schools juniors and seniors. And we're in the business of creating opportunities for students to recognize their next phase of their career development. So, whether a student is interested in a four-year college, a community college, trade, apprenticeship, or just to get into an entry-level position outside of employment, they're making a great or an invaluable step coming into the Prudence Center, to help prep them for the careers of their choice. When you look at opportunities, Mrs. Best has already joined in with us, talking about industry credentialing. We're a dual-pathway school, and when I say dual pathway, we want to make certain that we're offering entry-level employment after high school, as well as making others aware that there's also continued education that's going on, which will prepare them for post-secondary education. education. When you look at our state-recognized industry examinations, out of the sixteen classes, we offer fifteen sort of industry credentials that are state-recognized, meaning that these are also able to be used to verify course credits towards graduation in the high school areas. I listed just a few up there, the Virginia State Board for Cosmetology, Certified Internet Web Master, Oracle Database, and ASC, which deals with our auto body and auto service. That second part, when I speak of post-secondary education, is the dual credit courses. Out of our sixteen classes, seven are dual credit courses, meaning that inside of our Virginia Community College system, students have an opportunity to join these seven courses at the Prudence Center and have that opportunity to have the amount of credits offered in parentheses applied to an associate's degree within their school and once they graduate out of high school. So that's a pretty amount, a pretty, pretty valuable amount of time that they're spending in our center and to be able to leave with six, three, fifteen, twelve, or six credit hours, depending on which actual opportunity you take advantage of. One of the big things when we work hand-in-hand with our middle school and our high schools, when we kind of join in and try to create these programs, we want to make certain that we are marketing them at an early age. We go as far as visits to the elementary schools during career days, also coming into the middle schools. Of course, we have our principals and counselors' days where we invite our entire city's principals and counselors down to kind of make them aware of any changes that have occurred with Prudence Center opportunities or coursework, as well as the counselors. And then we finish it off with our college and career readiness fair where the Prudence Center offers their fingerprint or attempts to put their fingerprint on closing that gap so that these transitions are much easier. So just again, and plugging the Prudence Center, just a great opportunity to close up the situation when you're trying to transition into entry level or continuing your education at the post-secondary education level.
Skinner?
Yes, sir?
One question. The dual credits, are all of them through Paul D. Camp or some of them through Tywar Community?
Right now, Paul D. Camp. Great partnership with Paul D. Camp, so we try to go there first because they've been very open and close in proximity to our center as well.
Do students have to pay the, the dual enrollment fee per courses?
In the past, yes. This is going to start a new trend, and I don't really want to speak on it. Hopefully, they will continue to do what they're attempting to do for us this year. In the past, they had. This year, they're embarking on a different situation where they're trying not to take money out of the students' pockets.
Thank you.
Yes.
Skinner, you sure you just were appointed in July?
I was actually at the Prudence Center nine, ten years ago, so I'm very comfortable with it, Mr. Copeland.
It is obvious that you are because you are expressing yourself quite well.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
The other piece, and I know three of the board members who serve on the Prudence Board realize this, Mr. Skinner has put together a very, I think, aggressive marketing plan because I've always said that the Prudence Center is like the best kept secret in Suffolk as far as students choosing to go there. And we're trying to move away from that, that connotation that it's only for students who aren't going to college, because you can get certifications there, and it's very wise to get them there to build your resume or to just be that much more marketable. But I don't know if you want to speak to some of the initiatives for marketing?
Yes, one of the first things that we're going to embark on is, is an iPhone app for Android and iPhones, so that the students will be more abreast of what current offerings outside of it. They're going to spend a lot of time on smartphones and iPads, and we want to make sure that we're aggressively kind of keeping them in the loop with a lot of this information on top of what they're actually getting throughout the counselors joining them. We're also going to be joining the high school counselors and speaking with principals and counselors, starting them off with a survey to attempt to see how much more aggressive they can be in utilizing the available slots that Suffolk Public School has for their students from each high school. So we've been kind of going back to the last five years, an attempt to determine how many slots have been used, why they haven't been used, and aggressively also pursue what opportunities out there that may change with the business world that students are encouraged to come to the Prudence Center or want to be a part of when you're talking about employment opportunities. We're also continuing to go to the Prudence Center. We've also joined in with our partnering district, which is Allen White, going into their fairs, and we're going to be just going around having individual talks to see what the students are saying, how we can best describe programs so that counselors and principals can encourage, because we feel like we're the tool that is going to be the most aggressive marketing strategies. When you go beyond just the, the normal video, the ads, the, you know, face-to-face conversation seems to do a lot, and the tours inside of our building, we're trying to have a career day so that when we bring in students through our open house, it's not just to the students that are at the Prudence Center, but it's open to all high school students in preparation to the career plans that begin on the ninth grade level once they enter high school so that they can adjust their schedules after seeing some of the attempts at career entry opportunities that reside at the Prudence Center. So we don't want them to wait until the eleventh and twelfth grade school year. We want to start hitting them early in the ninth and tenth grade so that they can adjust schedules to be more readily available for opportunities that reside at Prudence.
We've tried to take you again from elementary to high school on through to the Prudence Center and show how a career plan develops for our students and that those plans are revisited each year. We've also, as you can see, have taken very many, quite a few shameless plugs on things that are coming up. So while there were some things that were specific to some of our schools, they really do transcend across the district, elementary, middle, and high, particularly with career days at the secondary level, our career fair, college and career fair that's coming up, as well as other opportunities, college nights in the schools. Any other questions for us before we wrap up?
I have a couple of questions if you don't mind. First of all, I have a concern that we're following the tradition that we followed for the last fifty years in public education, that is, general education, business, college, and military. So it's, we're following on the same path. Now, it may be different place, we're taking detours to different places, but I don't know that we're following the right protocol that we should be for this day and time in our country. If you look at the problems we had in Baltimore and I think at St. Louis, people came out of those problems with suggestions, not about the police, but about the education of the kids that were causing the problems, that they were dropping out in elementary, middle, and high school. And I think it's pretty evident that we have some of that problem here. We have a dropout rate of about ten to fifteen percent, which is about, what, four hundred kids?
We'll be sharing that with you at the formal session. Our dropout rate right now is...
That was the only part of the situation I'm trying to bring out. I think what we need to do is we need to start looking at programs and be more proactive, I guess, I don't want to word that much, but proactive in getting our students involved at an earlier age into these different things that we're offering in high school, maybe getting kids interested in what they want to do rather than what we want them to do.
Perhaps that the, the state is now requiring the academic career plans that were presented today, that begin in, actually, fourth grade on to fifth grade at the elementary level, that is the direction and the push that we're taking to then tap in early to the interest that students have. And then if, even if that changes over time, revisiting that plan allows us to then schedule them appropriately and introduce them to those resources and things that will help them to go into the areas that they're most interested in, not what we want them to go into, but, but really what they're interested in. And I think the, the steps we've been taking the last couple of years, two years in particular with the academic and career plans will allow that to happen.
I think the interest surveys that was shared also is huge. Just speaking from personal experience, I know students will take that inventory and then it will match them with careers based on what they're interested in, and they'll stick with those careers or that interest, and then try to take courses, what is it going to take in order to get that in that career? But it can shift as well. So I, I do feel like it's a collaborative effort where the teacher or counselors shows the students, these are the results now, this is the field that if you like working with others or you like working alone, then perhaps this field type of thing. I think it's always, I think it's, it's important for us to look at what other opportunities can we offer our students? I mean, I know years ago, we talked about an arts program, but we didn't see it as a, as a priority because we wanted to have more academic programs, specialty programs at each of our high schools. But I do believe we do need to make certain that students have a huge role into what they're interested in, realizing they may not always know, or also realizing that it may change as they get, get older quite naturally. And that's why I think the revisiting, I mean, when you hear our guidance counselor say that they meet with every students, every student, that's important, and it's, and it's a challenge, I know. We have, what, four guidance counselors at a high school and over a thousand students to sit down and say, let's talk about this individually. You know, there are some group things, but individually, it's a matter of really trying to pinpoint what the student is interested in and making sure that we got them in that direction.
I have, I have a concern. I'm, I'm not necessarily disagreeing with the chair, but we say we let the students decide what they are interested in. Some, some students are, really don't know what they're interested in. Now, being from the old school, I guess that's what he was addressing, but the parents have a role to play as well, because some students try to get easy courses, but they are capable of handling more difficult courses. And if parent, if the student has the right to decide for him or herself, then they're going to take courses that really they don't necessarily need. So as I said before, I know when my children were in school, we, we sort of directed what they need to take. And sometimes the courses weren't easy. They wanted to bypass the, the more difficult courses and some of the more difficult teachers and get the easier things. So I think the parents should play a role as well as the interest of the student, because some students are too, too immature, in my opinion, to decide what they need to take.
May I ask a question? You know, you were talking about the ten to fifteen percent that drop out. And I know this is, will probably be addressed later, but, you know, we're talking about starting these programs at, in the fourth grade and, you know, developing plans and career plans. What percentage of the ten to fifteen percent of students were in our school system in the fourth grade? And, and the reason I'm asking the question is, I, I think we should be, as you said, responsible for the developing plans for these kids, but I'm also can, I just also would like to know what kids come to us in the ninth grade and drop out in the tenth grade? I just...
I don't have that number, but we can, we can get that. We should be able to get it as far as...
Well, I'm only asking just because I, I do think that we should be responsible for all of our students, but at the same time, I think we should also be realistic about some kids that come and go a lot.
Yeah, I have a problem with that. I think the concern I have is that we may be waiting too long to offer some of these programs to some of our students that need them early on. I think that if we offer some vocational programs, maybe even arts and athletics banned in the eighth and ninth grade, or seventh, eighth, and sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, where the kids are starting to fall back.
I, I will say, when you look at the goal rod sheet, the one, the one neat thing that we do with the exploratory courses is almost like the students get to taste a little bit of everything. They get to have, one nine weeks, they may have art, the next nine weeks, they may have music, they may have foreign language, the flex in particular. Explain flex. I'm not doing well.
They get exposure to several different of those elective, what we call elective courses. So it could be exposure to, to Spanish or to French. That's also what we offer, web process and keyboarding at the middle school level as well, and that's actually a requirement for graduation from high school, so we introduce that at eighth grade. And just as the superintendent described in what's on that sheet, there are several things that they are exposed to, so that when they do sit down to schedule for ninth grade or for high school, further into high school, they have an idea and have had some exposure to that. Also to Mr. Copeland's point about the involvement of the parents, I think one of the nice things about the two websites that we shared with you today is that the parents have access to those at home, so when that career plan goes home and the counselor has met with the student and they take that home and talk with the parent, they can also interact online with those different interests that are part of that program. And then it's that decision between the parents and the students as far as really what direction they're going to go into, but as you said, it's up to us to also make sure that they're taking the appropriate courses to be, to be prepared in whatever career option they choose. And so to Mrs. Buck had a concern also about the marketing piece, what we can do in the future is when we have those, we have the parents' night advertising and giving them information about those three programs in particular, the medical, the engineering, and IB, we can also send that home when that career plan goes home so they can review that, because all the information there as far as courses that could be, that should be taken in preparation is in that information.
I had one concern too, sort of along with what Dr. DeBransky was saying. Have we explored more hands-on opportunities for middle schoolers? What type of things, you know, how long have we been doing these same programs? You know, these exploratory courses? Have we explored some other avenues? Are we planning to look at some other things to get more hands-on for a lot of our students? I see a lot of students that come to us, particularly PPC concerns. We're seeing a lot of middle school students coming to us, and they're just sort of lost, you know? And I wonder if we are doing everything possible to have more hands-on approach in the middle school to help these students, you know, because not every kid is banned or chorus or whatever, you know? But there may be some other things that we could offer that are not...
I think we can certainly explore other options as far as electives are concerned. When you look at these courses, with the exception of perhaps chorus, all of them are truly hands-on type courses that students will be engaged in. But you're right, if we look at, if we were to go back and say, when was the last time we added a new elective to middle school? I'm not so sure when that, what that date would be, so that's something we can certainly explore.
Right, that's what I'm...
And some of that could very well be obtained perhaps from an interest survey from our students. Doesn't guarantee it, but it could be something we can explore to see, having that added as an elective. I know we've all, always talked about and want to focus on STEM education, so we want to get that, make sure that the science, technology, educa, engineering, and math is there as well. We can look at some type of course that can highlight the engineering piece just a little bit more on the middle school level versus just being in Project Lead the Way at the high school level.
As Ms. Barron said, a couple of weeks ago, PBS had Career Education Full Day Program, and they went to different areas. And one area in middle school, the young men and women were doing web design. And it was, I mean, they were most interested in it as the reporter interviewed them, and I can see us going to that level because our young people are really into technology. And by the time they would reach the high school level and continue to the career and technical area of it, they would be ready for work.
I think I would agree with you, because when we offered, I don't think it was web design, but it was aligned with that, a new program at the Prudence Center, it became one of the most popular programs. I forget the, say it again? Yes, the modeling and simulation course was heavily, heavy enrollment in there. So you're right, we've got to change with the times as well.
Mrs. Best has actually looked into a Project Lead the Way STEM component at the middle level, and it's included, I think, in the seven-year plan. We've talked about it, it may require some changing at the, the schedules, the way the schedules look at middle school, but we'll continue to explore that.
Scheduling in middle school? I think that these kids need to have some of the experiences that the high school kids are getting now, because they're the ones that are going to be our potential dropouts.
And I, you know, we thought it was important for you, for the board and the public to see, when we talk about college and career readiness, as you all well know, it does start on the elementary level, letting them be aware of those different careers out, out there, letting them also be aware of what it takes to perhaps hold that particular career. I know you all are aware that Ms. Best has a non-traditional, what is it called?
Stravagance.
Right, where we get the, get the gender of the not-so-common person to present in a particular field, so that students will see the opportunity is there for them to do that as well.
I have a question.
If I heard you correctly, one of the things that I've gathered from this is we will look at alternative or additional offerings perhaps at the middle school level, obviously based on where we are as a school system, but also where we are as a society, based on students' interests and where we know those careers possibly may, may... on students' interests and where we know those careers possibly may, may be for our students.
Technology and seeing medical, medical fields are going to be the fields of the future.
That concludes the work session agenda item that you all had asked for me.
Any other comments by board members, questions or concerns? Can we have a motion to go into a closed meeting?
Motion is needed to go into a closed meeting to discuss the following items and subjects. Pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, number one, the discussion and or consideration of the personnel report and related information. Number two, the discussion and or consideration of the pupil personnel report and related information. Number three, the discussion and or consideration of Personnel Action Number 1516-1. Number four, the discussion and or consideration of Student Appeal Numbers 1516-5 through 1516-8. And number five, consultation with legal counsel employed by the school board regarding a specific legal matter requiring the provisional legal advice by counsel, and more specifically as relates to Suffolk City School Board versus Terry A. Rose, his parent and next friend of CR, and B. United States of America versus School Board of the City of Suffolk, all of which is authored by Section 2.2-3711, 1, 2, and 7 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended.
Send move.
Second. Board members will please vote.
Are you prepared? Okay, well, let's go with her.